Welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody, to this planning board meeting Wednesday, October 20th, 2021. First item on our agenda is a roll call. In the house this evening, we have Bob Behr, we've got John Beckett, we've got John McIntosh, myself, Phil Ruck, and remotely. I, well, I heard Lisa Buck, and I see Mike Costello and Krista Spencer is also here participating remotely. Next up, acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion? One second.
Second.
Jed Beecher, sorry, Lisa. All right. The only item today, I just want to clarify for everybody that our old business item A. We are just going to get an update. The applicant was not ready. Kyle's going to give us an update, but I just want to let you know that we will not be having that public hearing for the finals this evening. Other than that, any other comments, changes, edits? All right, hearing done.
For the approval of the agenda, John Beckett?
Yes.
Phil Ruck?
Yes.
Jed McIntosh?
Yes.
Robert Behr?
Yes.
Krista Spencer?
Yes.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
That's seven four.
Next up, approval of the minutes of September 22nd, 2021. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Very good. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike. All right, so we have our wonderful minutes prepared by Jessica. Any edits, changes?
I've got a couple.
Good.
Okay. You ready?
Ready.
All right. On page two. Um, the one, two, three, the third completes. Paragraph down, the one that starts Mr. Ruck. The third line from the bottom. At the very end of the line is a sentence that starts, because the intention of NKSE properties plans to construct. And what we need to strike after because we need to strike the intention of if we remove those three words, then the whole sentence reads smoothly.
I think grammatically too, while we're on that sentence, I didn't catch it, but because the, I'll just say, but because NKSE properties plans to construct a further two single family attached structures, does that make sense? A further?
I'll revisit that sentence.
All right.
And the other one is on page four. Okay, and we are one, two, three, four. The fifth full paragraph down, the one that starts with Ashley Case. The first sentence towards the end of the line. It says, the environmental cost to benefit ration, that should be ratio.
Okay.
That's it.
I'm on page three.
Very good.
Fifth paragraph, stuff in Mr. Jack, Jack Draxler. Fourth line. Says, right away, given that the property at what's the point is bound on two sides by really air. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Very good. Thank you for those edits. Do you have a motion? We have a second, so all those in favor of Jessica, you know, up again, please.
For the approval of the note of the September minutes, John Beckett? Phil Ruck?
Yes.
John McIntosh? Right. Mr. Behr?
Yes.
Krista Spencer?
Yes.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
That's six four with one abstaining.
All right, next up, old business. This is for the final subdivision review for NKSE Investment LLC. Again, as I mentioned before, we are not going to have a public hearing, but Kyle could give us an update on this item, please.
Sure. So last month, we had the preliminary subdivision review for that project with the applicant needing to bring back a landscape plan amongst a few other conditions and additional items for the final review. They were working on it, and it put together some of the the follow-up information, but they're still finalizing some of the details on the landscape plan. So they're looking to come back for the final review in November and simply table the discussion this month.
Thank you. Very good. Moving on, number five, new business. First up this evening, we have a site plan review application by the University of Maine and Radnor Property Group LLC located on 168 College Ave. Text map 11-0 lot 77 in the University District. The specific project be located around Munson and Sebeck Road on the University Main Campus. The application is proposing the redevelopment of Coburn and Holmes Hall to be used as a hotel. Before we get going, I do want to mention, I brought this up to Kyle, I do actually work with the university as a consultant. However, I did mention this to Kyle, I'm going to bring it to the board that I have absolutely no issue being just non-biased with this. I don't operate that way. I review that as I do in the other projects. But I do want to throw it out to both the applicant and board members if they have any issues with with me remaining on his chair for this project, whatever you choose.
You're not involved in this project?
Correct.
Other projects?
Correct. We do environmental engineering consulting, but nothing to do with this project. Other than want to bring up the news.
I have no problem with it.
I'm okay with it.
I'm fine.
No wish, no worries on my part.
Okay, University of Maine, I just want to, I'm not carefully heard from you, if the applicant is there. I need to ask you as well if there's any issues with that.
Um, Phil, I'm here. This is Jody O'Neil from Sewell. Um, I'm fine with it. I think that there's some people on from the university. I don't think they're panelists. I'm not sure if they can comment or raise their hand.
I have David Jaeger here, who has raised his hand. Should I let him talk?
Yeah, so he's from Radnor.
Okay.
Go ahead, David. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me now? Great, thank you. This is David Jaeger. I am president of Radnor Property Group. We have no objections.
Thank you. Very good. With that, I will remain, and I do believe we have the applicant's representative, Jody from Sewell Company. Can you please give us a summary of the project and what you propose?
Sure. So they're looking to basically redevelop Coburn and Holmes Hall for a hotel project. Uh, so they're taking Coburn, they're redoing it, putting hotel rooms in there. Holmes Hall, the existing Holmes Hall, they'll do the same. They'll redo it, but they'll add an addition on. Um, so total, there'll be 93 hotel rooms between the two buildings and the addition. Um, they have to, it is a historic property, so they are working with like the Park Service and the Historic Commission, stuff like that, to make sure that the project blends in and meets all their guidelines. We are adding parking to go with the hotel. Uh, so just kind of reconfiguring that front area and the road that goes up to the library. Um, so we're adding total of 96 spaces. I believe it was required to do 95, so we just have one extra. Um, redoing some walkways. We have some stormwater treatment in there. Um, so the project, the whole campus has a site law permit already. So basically what we do is every time they, you know, add on, we just have to meet those requirements. Um, so we put in 200 drain soil filters and one bio retention cell between the three buildings to treat the stormwater runoff from the site and then some existing runoff uh, in the area. So hopefully that will help their campus. And let me see. Um, as far as traffic, um, the hotel itself does not trigger a main DOT traffic movement permit. Um, so I think there was some discussion on um, for the campus. So right now, the campus is working with the DOT. Uh, trying to figure out if the campus itself needs a permit. Um, so they're kind of working through that, but as far as the hotel goes, um, that project itself does not trigger a permit. So that's kind of where we are with traffic. And I can, want me to share my screen and I can put up um, some of the drawings so people can see them for those who have not. Um, let's see. Uh, sorry, I just need to move that. So this is the site plan. I'll show you Coburn Hall first. So this is Coburn Hall as it exists today, this darker outline. So we're not changing any of the footprint, and the roof has already recently been redone, and I believe the windows and doors. Um, so basically, we're just adding this parking lot out front here, putting a dumpster in, and then some walkways. So we'll have some walkways out front. Continue this walkway around along Munson Road here. Um, and then we have an underdrained soil filter to treat the water from this parking lot. Um, couple parking spots across the street, just parallel parking. And then when we move over to Holmes Hall. So this lighter line underneath here. That's the existing Holmes Hall. So they'll be redeveloping that this side of it, and then the addition is back here. So that's the addition. Um, this is the new parking lot. So obviously, they'll come in here. We kept this road going up to the library so they can have deliveries and everything there. Um, dumpsters will be here with fence screening. Uh, let's see what else we have. Walkways coming, still doing this connection up to the library and to Winslow Hall. And then we also are connecting the sidewalk up through here, too. Um, this is the bio retention cell out front here. So that'll be treating the runoff from the parking lot. And then we have one in back. So that'll be treating most of the water off of the Holmes Hall addition. A couple snow storage areas in front of the library, and then this space in between Winslow and the parking lot. I think that's just a quick rundown of what we're doing. Does anybody have any questions?
We'll bring that up in just a minute, Jody. I'm going to have
Okay.
Kyle has prepared a review for the board.
Okay, perfect.
Items, and then we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Kyle, you have prepared a summary of the application. Can you put the board?
So I think Jody went over a lot of it, and I think Sewell did a pretty good job of giving pretty in-depth plans that covered pretty much all of the areas that the ordinance requires. Overall, the project is, obviously, it's located on the university campus, which is in the university district. Hotels are allowed use there that require site plan review. This lease area for this project, it's a little over two and a half acres, as it stated in the application. Because this area is already largely developed, it's only a little over half an acre of actual new impervious area. Talking with town staff as far as stormwater and traffic. Through the things that Jody was just talking about, there were no real concerns or issues identified by the town engineer or public works department. We do have some standards in our land use ordinance as far as the, any historic properties as part of the national registry of historic places. Do have to, you know, take into comments from the state historic preservation commission, which we have kind of done project, and then sort of go into detail with the addition, how that blends in, but has to be different at the same time. Existing buildings, the parking area, the layout both dimensionally and the access there meet all of the third dimensional requirements of the ordinance, and the fire department reviewed that and approved that in terms of emergency access. There was some, really vegetation removed primarily, I think uh, with the the Holmes Hall parking area, but on the landscape plan, the applicant shows a fair amount of new trees and shrubs going in around the project area. The sidewalk's still providing access to the surrounding areas, so there's really the only comment that any town staff had was around the existing sewer lines being older. Both the dramatic in with the waste water facility and town engineer, Manny Oliver commented on that. Those comments were related to Sewell. And I think they were prepared to make some of those adjustments to the plan. And if the, if the board was ready to to move forward on the project, it would be possible, I think, for that to be made a condition of approval. And so long as an updated plan shows those improvements before being issued the building permit, the project could be approved. That is the condition. Anything else, I think, has been covered, but again, happy to answer any questions if anyone has.
We're good. I will, before we open up public hearing, I will open it up to the board for questions from either the applicant, Jody, or Kyle. I do want to kick off just a couple of things. In the summary, Jody, you might be able to answer this. The summary that Kyle provided, and you had mentioned that the project is proposing a combined 96 spaces, and then it goes on to continue in that review, it says, a small parking area will be located next to Coburn Hall with 15 spaces. And then it talks about the Holmes Hall addition consisting of 90 spaces, so add those together and you get 105. Could you just mention it? It, it, it sounds like it is 96. I'm not sure where the discrepancy is. I just want to make sure we get it right.
Um, I'm just looking at our site plan, and we have 79 total at Holmes Hall, 17 at Coburn for a total of 96.
Okay.
And I think I counted the three across the street as part of Coburn, the ones, the parallel parking areas. I think I counted those as Coburn Hall.
Okay, so it ended at 96, it's just a summary.
Yeah.
The plan indicates 96. It might have been a typo.
Okay. Good. I just want to make sure that the numbers were next up, and this is just, again, one of the things I noticed, it's the type of work I do, but in the summary for stormwater, it says, the town's review said, because the university has a closed drainage system which drains directly to the river, the town's post-construction stormwater management ordinance is not applicable, and those of you that, you know, have been on the board, if, if we get projects that discharge to the town's separate storm source system in the urbanized area, the town has a permit with DEP, and we need to have an agreement with the developer, the applicants, to make sure that stormwater infrastructure is maintained overall. So that, that comment there, just about that it's a closed system, it's not actually accurate. So, and, and Jody, you might be familiar with this, but that whole system, so the university actually does drain into Orno system along College Ave, so the university owns all the stormwater infrastructure up on the campus, and then they drain to the town system on College Ave, and then the town system then drains back to the university where it discharges to the river. So technically, this, you know, this is not correct. But just looking at the plan and hearing your description, it does sound like for this particular project, your, you know, your underdrained soil filters and the stormwater management that you proposed from this project does actually drain directly to the university system, but it is not closed on the way down to the river. But I think, Kyle, you mentioned that you had spoken with town staff and you, you mentioned a comment to me earlier.
Yep. So I did speak with town staff, public works, and town engineer about this idea because I wasn't 100% familiar with it. As Phil said, we do generally require in our this four area that the post-construction stormwater agreements are put in place. But yeah, that it has been a precedent that projects on the university campus as, I guess they're primarily in their own system and flow directly to the river, that we have not included them in our post-construction agreements in the past. So that was the, the feedback I got, sort of on how university projects have been treated in the past. So yeah, I think it's important to clarify the, the technical difference, but it seemed like it was the intent was still the same where this project would not have to to meet that standard of having that maintenance agreement in place. But at the same time, the applicant did provide their own inspection and maintenance plan of the stormwater facilities in the application. So that process of maintaining and upkeep of the stormwater management systems would still be there regardless. As the university is also part of the stormwater.
And Jody, the, the underdrained system probably just discharges to, must have tied that into either catch basins nearby the project, but it, it likely doesn't drain directly to the College Ave's system that the town owns. Is that correct?
Uh, so I'm just looking at that now. So are the soil filters, one just drains to daylight, then there's a catch basin just kind of down, down the hill. Um, and then I have, oh, it's a two drains to daylight, sorry, and then one goes to a catch basin that's right there. I'm just looking at their, kind of their pipe network here. So it comes down to College Avenue and basically crosses and then goes to the river.
This is a weird but yeah, that, that's what happens. So it actually drains, but it's not, the way I thought of it, it's probably not directly draining, you're as you said, it daylights, and then it gets into a basin eventually, or drains down the hill.
But yeah, I mean, I can share this. Um, I can share this drawing with you if you want me to put it on the screen.
Uh, yeah, if you wouldn't mind. It just, again, I don't want to complicate things, but just caught that in the review that.
So it's, you know, it's kind of hard to see with the colors that they've used. So this is the library um, right here, trying to find Winslow. Maybe this is upside down. Uh, let's see, library Moosehead, Scoodick, okay. All right, so this here is the Scoodick, this is Munson Road. Um, Holmes Hall, can you see my cursor, by the way?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so Holmes Hall's right here, so we're draining over here to this catch basin for, for the bio retention cell. The other stuff comes back here and in this one. So we're in four dash four. And then, so four dash four comes down. And then it goes right here. So this is College Avenue right here. So it crosses right here and goes to the river. And then the other side with the other two soil filters comes down this catch basin line, crosses College Avenue and to the river. Does that call?
Yeah, it does, you know, but the end result, as Kyle said, typically that this has not applied to the university in the past. I mean, looking at it, it really doesn't drain directly to the town system, so I'm not going to split hairs here. I just, I want to be clear with the board that it does, it's not a closed system. Goes through the town, but not, not a big deal. Our, our entity or town staff weighed in on that, so I'm okay with that. Just wanted, wanted the board to know.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? From board members?
I have just one comment, and then I have a a follow-up on what you were saying, so I understand exactly what you're doing there.
Yeah.
One of our standards is that they can financially for the projects, let's speak, approve of the funds. And I know that they have the funds, but I did think it was interesting that they could just write a letter themselves saying, yes, we have the funds. Does that mean that anybody can just put, lay a letter and say, yes, we have the funds? Which is fine. I'm not, I just thought it was, I didn't know if there was a requirement for it to be for their state entity, but I did think it was kind of interesting. Any other project, we expect some sort of third party verification, right?
Right. I think generally, yeah, that's, I think, how it's, it's done.
You just don't wait. So that's, I just thought it was interesting that the letter was from the people doing the project saying, yep, we can do it. We get the money. But anyways. Um, that was more of a comment. So I, I assume that that meets the standard because it's in the application and
Yes. Yes. I think the, I mean, there's no specific standard in the like, along with the other performance standards in the land use ordinance, it's more of a finding. So I, I think it's a statement that the applicant is making. And then it would become a violation if the information they put in the application was not true.
Yeah, to another part, you would not trust the person yourselves. So you're saying that, are we saying now that the standard is, because we started these, you know, our code enforcement officer was doing these stormwater inspections, we used, oh, I used track down when that rule change happened.
More than three years ago, five years ago? Five.
And so since then, I don't recall any of these projects. Like, but we saying now that, and I'm okay with it because they have their system and this process, but at least.
There have been university projects that have been come to the planning board.
Right.
That, that would still apply to, so like the, the engineering building, I think, or something like that. So like, yeah, I'm not sure in that time, one has come to the planning board.
So they have their own plan, but they're not, we're, we're just saying that we feel in the university, we don't need to take the extra step to inspect it ourselves. That's what we're saying with the new university projects, right? Is that, are we saying that explicitly?
If, if the agreement applies in this situation, either the university would have to provide the town with an inspection record.
Right.
Or in the town, that usually doesn't happen, the town wouldn't inspect it themselves. They might check on things, but that's what that agreement requires. So with
Code Enforcement
The avenue, the avenue drain to Route Two.
Right.
And so every year, they have to inspect it and annually give, give a piece of paper to the To Route Two, and so every year they have to inspect it and annually give, give a piece of paper to the town. When Kyle said, and I asked him about it, he, he mentioned in the discussion with town staff. That they typically. Have not required it, and then I, I was thinking about this a little bit more.
Have not required the university.
Right.
Right, because the bulk of the system. Is on, right, and then goes to the river and bypasses the town system.
Yeah, it's, it's a weird situation, I just, it's not closed, like, when I read that.
I'm fine with it, I just don't understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, generally with the agreement, yeah, we get. Whoever is the owner of the property, has the inspection done, we get a report of it. The town probably isn't necessarily doing it, so we just keep that as a record and include that as part of the. The permit, the report to, to the state.
I, I do have first-hand knowledge that the university, uh, they, they take very good care of their. Infrastructure and, and, you know, it behooves them to, to follow the maintenance plan, operation maintenance plan that. Sue provided in the applications, to keep them up, otherwise. To think about, I was okay with, I was presented. Any other questions, uh? Anybody here remotely, Lisa, Mike, Krista? Alright. I am gonna open up the public hearing. Uh, Avi, do we have anybody, uh, online?
I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, we'll leave it open for a little bit, Kyle, I just, I. When I saw that, you know, major site plan review, we. If we were to proceed this evening, is there another step, but?
No.
I, I was just thinking, you know.
Major and minor, um.
Yeah.
There's no difference in process, it's just the, the information included in the application is a little different.
I was thinking with the, the application we, we heard last month, there was a preliminary and a final.
Right.
And I just, I couldn't tell the scale of this one. Was it two, two leading ones? Okay. So is there a timeline that goes from this process? Yes, there is, what is, you know, after approval, how many years, I'm trying to remember, is this. Two, two years you have to start construction?
Site plan is three subdivision is two years to complete the infrastructure, so they would have three years. Within that three years, the project doesn't have to be completed, just the building permits for the project have to be issued, and then. Once the building permits are issued, that's on another timeline of two years for the building permit. With substantial work needing to start in the first six months, so. And then there can also be an extension beyond those three years of site plan approval, it's just that if any standards change, um, that can complicate things. Requirement.
Jody, when is the timeline for construction if, if this was approved?
I can, I guess, let Dave maybe answer that to their plans.
Yes, yes, I'd be happy to, um, our, our plan is, um, to commence construction early part of next year.
Okay, and anticipated completion date?
Um, we're, we're targeting about, um, sixteen to eighteen months thereafter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Avi, anybody online?
Not seeing any hands raised.
Alright, uh. Last call for comments from the board. Anything remotely, uh, Krista, Mike, Lisa, anything? Alright, we're gonna close the public hearing. And if there's no further discussion, I think we have proposed, uh, findings of fact that consider. We're good, Lisa, Mike and Krista, do you have copies of these from Kyle?
Yes, I do.
I see Lisa nodding her head, Krista, you as well?
Yes, we received them.
Very good. Alright, so these are proposed findings of fact, uh, for consideration for the University of Maine. Radner Property Group LLC Site Plan Review, the October twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, pursuant to Article Six, Section eighteen dash one seventy-seven of the Orno Code Ordinances. The Orno Plan Board has considered the application of University of Maine and Radner Property Group LLC. For the redevelopment of Holmes and Coburn Hall as a hotel. Located at Tax Map eleven dash zero lot seventy-seven in the university district. Based on all evidence presented by the applicant reviewing agencies, town, the partners and the public found the following. And I'm gonna go through all of these and then ask for comments afterward, okay? Number one, requirements of the district that the proposed use is allowable use in the university district and that the proposal complies with. The applicable dimensional requirements of the district. Number two, compliance with town ordinances and codes. That the proposed use, structure, setback, buffers and layout meet provisions. The provisions of the applicable regulations of the town, including all pertinent sections. Chapter eighteen, land use ordinance, number three, utilization of the site, that this construction. Is within the natural capabilities of the site, is located in a suitable area of the site. Fits with the existing topography of the site and can accommodate any drainage associated with the construction. Four, traffic and pedestrian access that the surrounding roads have the capacity to accommodate. The vehicu, the vehicular traffic generated by the hotel use and all vehicular access areas. Meet the dimensional requirements of the ordinance, in addition, adequate pedestrian access has been provided. To the hotel and surrounding areas in the forms of sidewalks and crosswalks. Five, storage of materials, that there will be no exposed storage of materials. Six, stormwater management, that adequate provision is made for the collection and disposal of all stormwater. Uh, before we lose that, but, uh, I do want to make sure, again, there's a condition probably of approval. Uh, Jody, that required a site location, uh, amendment. Uh, for this work, you have a timeline on that?
Um, I guess I don't have a timeline, uh, timeline on it, um, Sarah Nicholson handles all their permitting. Um, so basically, I'm giving her all of our calculations and our design, and then. I think what she does is at the end of the year sends it in to the D E P. For any changes that the university does. Um. But I'm not a hundred percent positive on that, but that's what she, she kind of puts one amendment together. For all the projects that they've done, so right now, we're gonna start construction under their. Um, the educational exemption that the D E P has. Uh. I can't remember, I think it's sixty thousand square feet. That you can develop, um, so we're gonna do that and then she'll amend it and kind of wipe that clean, so they'll still have their. Um, exemption if they need to use it in the future.
Kyle, does this need to be a condition of approval that all, I mean, that we get at, at least a copy of the slot or is that even?
Definitely, it could be a reasonable or, or not. Yeah, I think so, a condition that a, a copy.
Yeah.
Forwarded, town staff, and if any. Changes were.
Typically have. A lot of comments and mistakes.
I think that's.
Alright, uh, side track there, alright, so with that change, you noted that.
So Phil, do you, are you saying once they submit it and get their approval that includes this project, you would just want a copy of the order? For the file, kind of a thing?
In, anything, well, if it was university or not, if it involves D E P permitting approval, we usually. Have that as a condition, so I don't see why this would be really any different when. Uh, Sarah would have incurred, she files that, just as long as the town ends up with a copy. Of any amendment that applies to this project would, would make sense to me, but.
Okay, and, but that wouldn't, um, hold back them being able to start construction, right, this is just. Cause they can start it with the exemption, correct?
Yeah, this is town approval and D E P would be separate, and if they have that exemption that they can use for D E P, that. The town isn't gonna stop that process.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying, just copy the permit for the town's record. Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seven erosion control, that the applicant has provided an erosion and sedimentation control plan. Will follow any applicable best management practices. Number eight, water supply and sewage disposal, that the site can be served by off-site water. Supply and sewage disposal and capacity layers for both facilities have been provided as part of the application. We'll make sure. Alright, yeah, so the recommendation currently. That, uh, that they addressed in Andy's comments, so that's already in there, so we're good there. And nine utilities that adequate provision has been made for utilities, ten natural features. That natural features are preserved on the site insofar as trashable. And that new vegetation is being proposed throughout the project area, in addition, no significant wildlife habitats or natural areas have been identified. Eleven groundwater and surface water quality protection, that the proposed development and use will not adversely impact the quality. Or quantity of groundwater available to budding properties or to public water supply systems. Twelve hazardous special radioactive materials, that the use of the site does not involve the handling, storage or use of. Hazardous special radioactive materials, thirteen shoreline relationship, that the site is not. Within a shortland area, fourteen solid waste management. Uh, that the proposed development provides for adequate disposal of solid waste, they did. Identify, town staff did as well, the, the dumpsters for each of the, the, the two, uh. Buildings that they're gonna improve. Uh, number fifteen, historic and archaeological resources that the buildings propose for redevelopment are on the National Register of Historic Places. And that the proposal meets the design guidelines. Of the National Park Service and the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, sixteen financial capacity, that the applicant has the financial capacity. Carry out the project, and lastly seventeen noise and lighting. That the facility will operate within the noise and lighting standards in town ordinances. Are there any comments or, uh, concerns with, with any of those seventeen items that, uh, I just set off? Alright, seeing none, I do believe we are ready for a motion.
I had, I just wanted to clarify two things, even though our primary concern is the sewer surface, the size and the change. Your recommendations, just a generic utility, or? What to do with that, just a generic. Utility plan?
So the. The shorelines are shown on that plan, so, and the. Also, yeah, the town.
Yeah, yours, yours definitely covers this.
Yep.
We're good not being more specific, just.
Off, right?
Yeah. So then the second piece is the language around the slot permits, so. Well, you did?
Yeah.
Perfect, if you got somebody.
I think that.
Perfect, alright. Um. I knew, uh, that we approved the site plan. Application by the University of Maine and Radner Property Group. To redevelop the Coburn Holmes Halls. At, uh, University of Maine as a hotel at one sixteen College Ave, Tax Map eleven, Lot seventy-seven. With two recommendations. Number one, that the applicant provide updated utility plan based on any changes made, the address to address. Challenge in your comments to be agreed by staff prior to taking. The building permit, and two, that copy of the slot approval be provided to the town and if any. Change to that plan are required by D E P, that the applicant will come back to the planning board to amend the site plan.
Uh, very good, we have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? The nine, Jessica, please.
For approval of the UMaine and, uh, Radner Group Site Plan Application, John Beckett.
Prove.
The Rock. John McIntosh.
Prove.
Robert Bear. Christopher Swenson.
Krista?
Krista.
Sorry, approved.
Good luck.
Approved.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
That's seven four.
Very good, thank you, Jessica. Alright, good luck, uh, next up, uh, a new business, we have a draft land use ordinance amendment. To amend Section eighteen dash one oh six, general uses. Uh, Section eighteen dash one fifty-three marijuana establishments and Section eighteen dash thirty-one. Definitions, make changes to the zoning and performance standards. For marijuana establishments, specifically marijuana retail stores in the C two district. And small-scale marijuana cultivation facilities. Kyle, you provided a summary of this item?
Yeah, so the. The primary reason for this was soon after the marijuana establishment ordinance went into effect. Um. The two zoning districts which allows marijuana retail stores were the commercial one district. Um, primarily along Stillwater Ave and the commercial two district on Park Street. Um. And that was based off of. Uh, our current ordinance around just regular retail stores being allowed in those areas. Uh, so when we were creating the marijuana establishment ordinance, we sort of mirrored that to those types of retail stores. Um, as the ordinance went into effect and we started getting. Interested parties in developing stores on Park Street. We quickly realized that it was. Uh, it would be very difficult to actually do that, um, between a, a childcare center. Or facility located on that corridor, um, the Islamic Center, um, called signs of places worship on that corridor. And the university. Being there and that property line, um. Having required setback. Um, it, it created, uh, just a basically impossible landscape to actually develop any of the lots. Um. But we included in the original ordinance, the standard that called out, um, for this exemption, basically. Where if there's a lot with numerous buildings on it and there was. A lot of undeveloped area in between those buildings and. You know, the place where the marijuana store was going, that it could get an exemption, so. Um, that was primarily to. Account for things like shopping centers and the C one, or, you know, something like that. Um, but what we realized is that it would apply to the university as well, and that area around. The roundabout, it, it became apparent that the only area on the Park Street corridor. Where you could develop a marijuana retail store was basically right at the entrance to Rangelie Road. Which kind of directly went against the intent, the original intent of the council and the university of having. Uh, marijuana stores in that area. So, uh, the council adopted a moratorium on specifically marijuana retail stores. On Park Street to give staff time and council time to work through. If there were different options, we looked at setbacks and the different buffers, you know, what properties would be. Um, available for development, depending on what options. Um, and, and the council's recommendation after it was that. Taking into account the original intent of all of those setbacks. That there, there isn't any good area realistically to actually develop, uh, a marijuana store currently on that corridor. And instead of. Making a sort of confusing environment where developers see that marijuana stores are allowed in the C two district. And call and ask about doing a project, only to find out they can't actually do it anywhere on the corridor. That it would be easier to just. Not allow the use in the C two district. So that was the eventual, um, outcome and recommendation that came out of the. The council committee meetings, and that's sort of what the, the ordinance amendment, um, reflects. Um, whereas we look at the section two on page two. You know, it crosses out the. The S, uh, under C two district for, for marijuana retail stores. Um, so marijuana retail stores with, um, with that change would just be allowed in the commercial one district. Uh, which we've approved one in that area, uh, for planning board so far, um, and there could potentially be room for. A couple more maybe, um, depending on the layout, but probably one or zero more realistically. You know, you really have to kind of stretch the boundaries. So that was the primary purpose of the change, uh, but while we were amending the, the ordinance already. Um, there were a few other. Um, just kind of clarifications to make, um, that, you know, as we went through the ordinance process, either things are. Um, missed or just not accounted for or not realized. So another, uh, change that was. Recommended and, and talked about with the, the council committee. Um, they primarily had to do with cultivation facilities, uh, and one. And one was that part of the original ordinance was that small scale cultivation facilities, where you had mature plant canopy not exceeding five hundred square feet, was allowed in the forest and agriculture district. And this was primarily to allow space for medical registered caregivers to grow their maximum, allow thirty mature plants or five hundred square foot area of growing. It would give them an additional smaller scale option to be able to do that. Staff kind of looked at the intent of the zoning districts in town and how in a lot of areas, the L D R, the low density residential district is a, is a hybrid between the more in-town developed part of the town and the rural agriculture district. And then when it comes to a lot of the agricultural uses, they're allowed in the forest and agriculture and low density residential districts. So in kind of keeping that theme of staying consistent, it was proposed that that same kind of five hundred square foot allowance of mature plant cultivation be extended to the low density residential district as well as the forest and agriculture district. And then the last thing was really this idea of marijuana nurseries, which was something that I think was overlooked in the initial drafting of the ordinance. Marijuana nursery under state law is a type of cultivation facility, but it's a little different than the other ones. It's primarily for, really exclusively for immature plants and seedlings and things like that. But it's not just a growing area. While the other larger scale mature plant cultivation operations, those facilities are only selling to manufacturing facilities or retail stores. They're not selling directly to consumers. A marijuana nursery has a retail component where they are selling to consumers. But at the same time, they can't grow, you know, they're limited to a thousand square foot plant canopy and that's immature plants and seedlings and things like that, non-mature plants. So certain things around odor concerns and things like that are a little less than with the larger cultivation facilities. But they also have a retail component to them that the other cultivation facilities don't have. So, when we talked about this at the council committee level, it was recommended that these types of businesses be allowed in the forest and agriculture district and the commercial one district. And those are two very different districts, but I, I think the idea really fits into both. Currently, just normal greenhouses and nurseries businesses are allowed in the forest and agriculture district with site plan review. And they're also allowed in the C one. I, I think the difference would be, you know, if you had one of these in the forest and agriculture district, it would probably be you know, some of the greenhouses we see in town already as you go out that way, out to Stillwater Ave and past. Whereas if one was located in the commercial one, it would probably be more of a storefront that might look more similar to some of the other marijuana retail stores, but just have this kind of growing component to it, sort of off to the side. So, with all that being said, that's sort of where the ideas with these changes came from. So the, the council committee had sort of gone over and landed on these changes. After a few meetings and discussion, it's now coming to the planning board for public hearing as it's amendments and land use ordinance. And after a planning board discussion, this would be one of those where the planning board is simply giving a recommendation for any changes or any edits or just approval back to the town council. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Question for Kyle from the board before I open it up, from the chair.
Thank you. Nursery provision, do they sell plants, finished products, or what can they sell?
So, they can sell seeds, seedlings, immature plants, so they're not selling mature plants. And I think they can sell under state law, like gardening supplies and things like that as well. But they're not selling any, it, it's not the same as a retail store where you'd be buying usable.
Finished products.
Yeah. It is more meant for the fact that part of the state law is that every person in Maine can grow their own three mature plants and how twelve immature plants. So this would be the avenue or one of the avenues that you'd be able to obtain those plants if you wanted to personally, I think, grow your own.
Do you have any nurseries as well?
Marijuana nurseries or?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, no. I'm sorry, did you say marijuana nurseries or just in general? No, there are no marijuana nurseries because without this change, it wouldn't be considered enough and allowed use. So, this is really to, to recognize that it was sort of overlooked in the initial drafting of the ordinance and this would give it a place in the town where it would become an allowable.
Kyle?
Yes.
It's Lisa. In your, in your travels or research, have you heard about any increased crime around places that grow or nurseries? Anecdotally, anecdotally, I have, I just wondered if that was something that you found anything about?
It hasn't come up on my end. But at the, at the same time, during my process of, and the land use side of it, hasn't been spent as much on, I, I think that aspect of it. So I, I can't say that I have any knowledge of it, but that also doesn't mean it hasn't been an issue in other cases.
Okay.
Kyle, just reading through page three.
Yes.
Just at the bottom, there's some text there that says, I want a new text.
Yes.
And I'm just curious, you know, describing the thought process, was this coming from some other ordinance or, you know, what, what your example was, because I'm just looking at the dimension, one fifty feet, leak property line or whatever. Just curious where that came from.
So, you see above that, there's the, that small section that's crossed out. It was meant to clarify the language that was originally there. I, I thought it wasn't worded as well as it could be. But that language in general was based off of during the best practice kind of review of other ordinances that I had seen, that, that concept was developed.
It's really good to clarify because when we did the approval for the current business that's in town, that, remember that came up that evening? Is that agricultural field that the university owns?
Yeah, we're there.
Immediately came up and we had to go with that.
That's what this just cleared up.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
That's a good, yeah.
Yeah, and that piece there about the university, the difference between university and university.
Right.
I did speak with the town attorney about that. And, you know, it was the intent of the ordinance to say a university as a land use. So, when you think of the use itself, it encompasses a lot of different buildings. It's not just any property owned by a university, but yeah, clarifying that was.
We, we had to address that on the fly, I think, because, but you know, just thinking about that project, you could tell what you, at least my opinion, the frame of that was meant to be. Just wanting editorial thing. While I'm looking, other questions on the board?
I have a question, actually a request for clarification. On page nine, item A, item two, we're adding L D R. And then we have, at the bottom of that little paragraph, it says, "The plant canopy of mature plants in these facilities shall not exceed five hundred square feet, except in the case of cultivation facilities operating as marijuana nurseries." So that seems to say that there will be marijuana nurseries in L D R. And then, down under number seven, it says marijuana cultivation facilities operating as marijuana nurseries shall only operate in F and A and C one districts.
Yeah.
So, why are we adding them under item two and then under item seven, we're saying, no, you can't?
So, two is only talking, two's goal is to talk about the small scale cultivation facilities in general, up to the, those five hundred square foot mature plant canopy type facilities. The reason it says except in the case of cultivation facilities operating as marijuana nurseries is because part of number two is talking about cultivation in the F and A. Seven, in the ordinance, the stricter always applies. So the fact that seven, seven is really the standard geared towards marijuana nurseries and where it defines where they're allowed. So the fact that seven says shall only operate in the F and A or C one, that's really stating where those, where that use is allowed. Two is just clarifying that if you're in the forest and agriculture district, you can, you can grow up to five hundred square feet unless you're a marijuana nursery, in which case you should jump to standard seven and which allows you to be a thousand square feet.
Okay, so, would it make sense not to add L D R in item two? If you can't do it, if you can't do it in the, in the L D R, why, why add it to item two? I think it's, it's confusing.
Well, the intent is to allow cultivation facilities in the L D R though, up to five hundred square feet. It's just that marijuana nurseries aren't allowed in the L D R. So, it, it's important to look at as two different activities. There's marijuana cultivation facilities where mature plants can be grown. And then there's marijuana cultivation facilities that operate as nurseries, which is just the, the immature plants and seedlings. So, in the forest and agriculture and L D R districts, you can have the cultivation facilities with mature plants up to five hundred square feet. And in the forest and agriculture district in C one, you can have the nurseries up to a thousand square feet. But the nurseries aren't allowed in the L D R. That was a, that was a question asked of council committee during the conversation and they, because of the retail component of the nurseries, that makes it a little different than the other cultivation facilities. And they didn't think the L D R, which is a more residential district, that specifically marijuana nurseries should be allowed in that district.
Yeah. I, I have no problems with the intent, but I'm having difficulties with sorting it out in, in reading it. In item six, that we have another case where they seem to be included in the L D R. And then, in item seven, you know, they're specifically excluded. So, it's just, you know, it's, it's the kind of thing that makes you think, well, I need a lawyer to sort this out. And we should be able to write it so that, you know, most people reading it can sort it out. Maybe we need a few more words.
I, I was thinking in two, if we just put at the end of that sentence, something like, except in the case of cultivation facilities operating as marijuana nurseries in the F and A zone only, something like that. Just clarifying that when you're referencing nurseries, it's only referenced in nurseries in F and A, because they're not allowed.
Krista, does that make sense? That's a good suggestion.
It's still. Um. I can't think, I, I can't think fast enough to answer that question. I'd almost need to see it in writing. So let's see, what, what are you adding here and where?
Get a caveat at the end of that one sentence in two. Except in the case of cultivation facilities operating as marijuana nurseries.
In the F and A zone only.
Yeah.
So just clarifying that nurseries can only operate, only nurses can only operate in F and A in, in the context of two.
Yeah, okay. I think that does it.
My question is, do we own the surrounding towns like the Budland and Old Town that are going to manage the same issues?
And everyone at this point is sort of on a different, it's really, it's up to the community. And so, Orinow had a townwide referendum to vote, you know, whether to pass the ordinance as it, as it was. And that vote passed. I'm not sure, I mean, Bangor, for instance, allows all types of establishments with fairly minimal restrictions. I think Brewer, I, I'm not sure what their current conversation is, but I know for a while, I think they were not allowing any at all. Some communities say, you know, you can do cultivation testing and manufacturing, but not retail. Some say the complete opposite, where you can have retail, but we don't want anything else. So it's, it's really been community specific and.
Can we learn anything from what they've done?
Well, yeah, and that's, during the draft ordinance process, I mean, that's primarily what we, we did. It took, I, I think I started researching this when I first got here and probably took a year and a half, two years before we finally landed on a draft document. So we certainly looked at what other communities were doing and proposing to do in other states and starting out in Maine as it started to unfold here. But, and also the, I, I think the purpose of this amendment is to, was to really look at the, the few changes. The overall, you know, adoption of the ordinance and the intent and message, I think, council is now looking to make changes and is keeping in line with what was originally adopted. It's just kind of clarifying these last remaining pieces.
I heard, did you have a moment?
I do, one question, one hypothetical. The, how to measure mature plant canopy? Is that someone goes out there and says each marijuana plant, I'm not that familiar, is one by one or something and so you can have five hundred of them? Is there an actual way to measure this? This is our, it's our.
So they give like dimensional and, and, and so that's why, I, I think the five hundred square feet is tied to thirty mature plants. I, I think it's an important question. And on there, I mean, on the, the plan provided, I think they would have to measure out the area in which the mature plants would be.
So the five hundred square feet of here.
Right, it would be shown on the, the plan. And then if, you know, the code goes to inspect that and there's five hundred square feet is supposed to be here and there's, you know, mature plants over here, but the five hundred square foot area is full, then, you know, they're beyond it. But I, I do think that it's, it's tied roughly to a number of plants.
So that L D R, that non-nursery gathering square feet, I can sell that, right? I can grow and sell it.
You sell.
Not on premise, but I can.
Right.
Cultivate it, take it someplace else and sell it.
Correct.
So I could in theory go out to one of these neighborhoods out there, buy a couple homes, start to keep greenhouses behind it, start whipping it up, make it to money. start whipping it up, make it some money. I just want to know.
Well, it's really, it's, it's just like, it would be treated just like any other tree. So greenhouses are allowed in the low density district or regular greenhouse.
Or just like an MDR, I couldn't do it, right? So what would happen in the MDR? So, so I didn't know though, we just get into a mess. Like if some of those neighborhoods out there, all of a sudden, you know, people could be popping up some, some greenhouses in the back of their yard.
So that was the conversation that the council had. And really it came down to that intent in the ordinance of the LDR district. It's supposed to be a kind of, it's a, it's a transition district that includes some of both. It's, it's partly residential and it's partly rural. So while, you know, the comp plan goes to supporting agricultural businesses and kind of, you know, being that kind of almost agricultural, commercial area almost. The LDR isn't quite to that extent, but at the same time, the minimum lot size in the LDR is an acre and a half. So the lots are bigger, it's more spread out, there is more opportunity for rural uses. So that's kind of why that was looked at there versus somewhere like the MDR where you have denser neighborhoods and.
Yeah, understood. I know what you, I was just, I mean, I, I don't know if we could get any kind of a pushback from the those neighborhoods in LDR and be like, what? You're letting this happen?
So I would say that the, the, the comment that we have received was the opposite, that people in the LDR were interested in doing that. So I mean, obviously there could have been other opinions, there could be people in other areas of the district who were in favor and that's, you know, the point of this and the council public hearing, but.
And so their public hearings, that was, that was the, nobody in the LDR said, oh, I get some sense about this.
Just brought up the question, is there any need to clarify or add definitions for what plant canopy, just to make sure that that's clear?
It's all defined under state law.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anything in, in our ordinance is based off of the state law so that like a.
You have a, you have your hypothetical.
That was my hypothetical. Now I know we gotta go look for some water.
So I had.
You need to be a registered character.
I can't do, I can do, that's easy, probably.
Yeah.
Just a quick editorial, page nine. We got number four and then number six, I just, whatever. Didn't notice these things. So the, the edit on number four, you said, unless the cultivation facility is located in the F and A or LDR district. Single. Number six, you say unless in the F and A or LDR district.
Yes.
Yeah, this is district.
Add the S to the force.
What's that?
I can add the S to.
Yeah. Other comments from the board, we do need to open this up to public hearing. All right. Abby, we got anybody online?
Nothing online.
Okay. Further discussion, Jeff's comments, Krista's comments. Then generate any more questions for you folks? I don't have anything more to add. A lot of this was some repeat language that Kyle added in the, in the ordinance. Last call, Abby, anybody there?
No hands raised online.
All right, we're gonna close that public hearing. All right, so our task is to provide a recommendation to the council. So this is formal, so I guess, can I hold a motion?
So the motion is, as is with the changes Krista wanted or?
Yeah, I can, I can make the edit that was proposed or I could look at other clarifying language, whether the board needs to see that or just recommend that that the language be made more readable, it's, it's really up to you.
Yeah, I would prefer not to have another item and carry this over to next month. Jen made a change, Krista, I heard you, you seemed to agree that that was okay. But how about if we ask that, that Kyle just give it the, the once over? Just to see whether he can improve the clarity so that Krista's comment about, you know, people reading this, they don't, they don't need to hire an attorney to figure out what our ordinance means. So we have one suggestion. Are people okay with it in a minimum? Krista's suggestion, Jeff's suggested edit, and then have Kyle just see whether he can improve it any further? Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good to me.
I'm okay with that. I think we don't have any questions because we really don't know what to ask right now. This is a whole new area for us.
I think you're right. Okay.
I moved it, we recommend the land use ordinance amendment to amend section eighteen dash one oh six, scheduled uses section eighteen dash one fifty-three marijuana settlements in section eighteen dash thirty-one, to make changes to the zoning permit statements for marijuana establishments, specifically marijuana retail stores in the CT district and small scale marijuana cultivation. Please, along with the changes that Krista asked under four A two. And Kyle's gonna do his best to refine all of which.
It was four eight seven. Number seven.
I think it was four eight two. At the F and A zone.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. Awesome. We have a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
John Beech, I'm sorry, my, with the remote, the lag there.
No worries, it's all good.
Further discussion?
To recommend the amended ordinance to council, John Beckett?
Agreed.
Phil Rock?
Agreed.
Jeff McIntosh?
Yes.
Robert Baer?
Yes.
Krista Switzer?
Yes.
Lisa Buck?
I request the ability to abstain from the chair.
That's fine. We have enough.
Abstain.
But if, if.
Yeah.
Michael Costello?
Approved.
Yeah, so six, four with one abstaining.
Very good. Thank you, Jessica. Next up, discussion. Kyle, we chatted with you earlier, you said we have a full agenda next time.
Yes. Potentially four items.
Wow.
Maybe three. Could also be five, but one of them is an ordinance amendment, so I think. Yes. So yeah, I mean, one of them, obviously the subdivision that we talked about before, that was reviewed last month, coming back. RSU, the school is looking at a very, very small potential amendment, just to clarify something from the site plan that was approved at the beginning of the project. So it's not a big thing, but it was just to clarify one of the conditions of approval that the planning board made. And then kind of small on the ground change during construction. A amendment to that the Grant Road subdivision that we've had in recent times with the adding of the lots. And there is a potential kind of mixed use conversion of an existing structure on Main Street. So that could be.
Good. Thank you, Kyle. I just want to give the board the heads up. I spoke to Jeff about this. So when we talked about the remote or the hybrid policy, Kyle mentioned that the chair and a minimum and town staff need to be present in this room. I'm gonna be traveling that week, our meeting, I just looked, it's on the seventeenth of November. And I'll be gone all that week, but I guess luckily or not, I guess I could participate remotely from the, from the hotel room. So I'm okay doing that, but I asked Jeff if he might be the in-person chair in my absence and he's traveling as well. So, you know, last time, it was the same situation with the both of us and we postponed the meeting, but that, that's not going to happen this time, Thanksgiving, town offices are closed. And I really don't like adjusting meetings too much. So I put the question to Kyle, I don't mind sharing the meeting, but it would be remotely. Kyle's gonna check with Sophie, town manager, to see whether that's possible. But haven't we chaired remotely before during the pandemic? So either way, to be determined, but Jeff will not be here. I expect Ashley, she told us she's, she's due to have a child in a couple of weeks. So she, she expects to be here, she said, in November. So we'll, we'll see about that. But yeah, so it's kind of what's on tap and we'll, we'll see how it goes. If they needed in-person chair, I'm gonna need a volunteer to run the meeting. And I mean, we can make it work if that's the call, but give you a heads up. All right, last up, German, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second please.
Second.
Thanks, Mike. Any further discussion? Jessica.
All right, for Jordan of the October meeting, John Beckett?
Yes.
Phil Rock?
Yes.
Jeff McIntosh?
Yes.
Robert Baer?
Yes.
Krista Switzer?
Yes.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
Evan Four.
Thank you. Have a good evening. See you in a month.
Thanks, everyone.